Wolfboro Select Board Meeting for Budget Review, Tuesday, November 4th, 2025, at 4:30 PM. We're here in the Great Hall. So, to begin, we're going to final budget review of proposed 2026 budget. Jim?
Okay. So, you've got a couple of documents in front of you. They were literally printed 20 minutes ago. The last time we met, there was a conversation about the proposed budget and the path forward as to how we get a budget passed, knowing that we have increases in excess of $2 million as compared to our default budget. The default budget, year over year, has led to a pretty significant compounding problem that is going to be extremely problematic to get by an operating of this town if we land into another default budget. You, as the board, stood here last session and discussed different amounts that you would like to see cut. I went through the budget, line item by line item, and I've got a series of suggestions in front of you. All of these budgets, the cuts, are going to hurt. My goal when I sat down to do this was to not impact staffing, if at all possible, and try to maintain as level of possible of services. I was able to do this without impacting staff to this point, but there will be an impact to the services provided for the community based on this budget. However, with that said, if we land another default budget, even with the adoption of these cuts, that is going to mean significant cuts to staff. No way around it. I've looked at this all weekend long. I've looked at different options, and if we can get this budget passed for 2026, we can sustain without significant layoffs. If we land a default budget, I'm estimating 10 to 12 layoffs. With that said, I have a quick PowerPoint to go through, and you have a document in front of you that lays out the itemization of budget cuts, an amount of $455,182. If you so choose to make a reduction, one-year reduction, to the hydrant fees in the amount of $175,000. And if you so chose to put the balance of the contracted ambulance service out to warrant in the amount of $292,097, that would give you a reduction in the proposed operating budget of $922,279. I know that is just moving the numbers around, but the interest here for me, quite frankly, is to get an operating budget passed. So, to kind of go through PowerPoint, those itemized reductions, executive budget, a reduction of $7,900; Town manager's budget, a reduction of $3,300; ZBA, reduction of $1,400; Planning Board, reduction, $11,150; Town Clerk, reduction of $4,000; Finance, reduction of $7,800; Assessing, reduction of $1,000; Tax Collector, reduction of $1,800; miscellaneous expense, reduction of $2,000; Planning Department, reduction of $2220; Brewster Building, reduction, $7,950; Technology, reduction, $18,480; Police Department, reduction, $35,000; Ambulance, reduction, $1,400; Fire Department, reduction, $12,390; Code Enforcement, reduction, $2,600; Emergency Management, reduction, $500; Public Safety Building, reduction, $7,900. Uh, excuse me, that's an error. I didn't get that one changed over. I think it's $2,900.
$2,450.
Thank you, Brian. Public Safety Building, $2,450; DPW Administration, $7,900; Streets and Highways, $117,500; Garage, reduction, $19,262; Buildings and Grounds, reduction, $16,500; Solid Waste, reduction, $19,450; Animal Control, reduction, $2,300; Parks Admin, reduction, $5,100; Parks Maintenance, reduction, $10,200; Beaches, reduction, $10,000; Abenaki, reduction, $7,600; Hockey Rink, reduction, $40,000; Programs, reduction, $21,150; Town Docs, reduction, $5,000; American Legion, reduction, $6,000; Living Museum, reduction, $11,180; Clark Complex, reduction, $300. There's the list of your reductions. If you were to take those reductions, combine those with a reduction of $175,000 for the hydrant fees one time, and remove the costs associated with the contracted ambulance service increases, you're looking at over $900,000 reductions. So, here's where some of my concern really lies. The 2026 proposed budget, the current budget, on the general fund only, that's the only thing I'm really concerned about at this point. This includes the police cars added in, the firefighter backed out in favor of a warrant article. We're looking at an increase in the operating budget of $2,480,718, 13.01%. We take the 2026 proposed budget, and we compare that to what we believe the default budget projections are going to be. That's an increase of $1,904,452. That to maintain level operations, we would have to find those funds. Now, let's take that and compare it to the default budget with the cuts that we're proposing. We make these cuts that you have in front of you this evening, and we land a default budget, we are still going to have to find $976,723 to maintain operations. It's not doable. This budget that I've gone through and cut line by line, the only way you'll get to cut another $976,000 is with staff. So, the next item that I kind of wanted to run by you is a little bit of history as to our operating budgets. So, last year, the 2025 operating budget, 41.05% of the voters voted yes on the budget. 2024, 49.2% of the voters voted yes for the budget. That was our first default. We've got a compounding problem here. 2023, the budget passed by 67%. So, when we look at what happened in 2023, 2023, we had a proposed all-in operating budget. I didn't have time to break it down for just the general fund, but we had an all-in operating budget of $31,226,191. There was a differential between the proposed and the default budget of $557,000. We should be able to make that up if we needed to. The budget passed in '23. Also in '23, we put out a series of warrant articles, cash warrant articles on the general fund for $3.7 million. That does not include the bonding. That's just cash. We advance to 2024. We go to default budget differential between the proposed and the default of $1,071,000. Again, all funds, 3.2%. We were able to absorb that. We took that year as well. We actually reeled in some of our spending on warrant articles to the amount of $2.145 million. So, that year, we reduced our warrant article cash appropriations. We had an increase in our default budget or in our budget, and we ended up into a default As we proceeded into 2025, we went back up to $3.1 million in cash warrant articles for the general fund. The increase between the default and the proposed was $2.2 million or 6% on all funds. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at at this point is, we've got, well, you now have some significant cuts in front of you for this operating budget. I can sit here and tell you, nobody in the staff is happy about it. I can sit here and tell you I'm not happy about it, but I'd much rather go this route than another default budget and be sitting here in five months laying 10 to 12 people off, because that is a cold, hard fact right now. You've got some cuts in front of you to consider. I don't know if you want to do those tonight. I don't know if you want to digest those and do them tomorrow. I mean, you just got it. I can try to answer any questions that you have.
Just one question, that's all I have. See, you would like us to consider whether we should agree with a $100 cut in postage in the executive budget?
I was tasked to reduce the budget. I went through the budget, line item by line item, and I made reductions as requested. Yes.
You know, I want to thank you for doing this. This took a lot of work, and none of us want to do this. But when I look at the difference between 13.1% increase and if we made the cuts, a 4.97%, I think this budget at that rate has a chance of getting through. And I wouldn't do, I always have believed that you put out the budget you think, believe the town needs to run on, but we're at a very different point at this point. We're looking at a budget that we think we can sell because the increase is low enough that the voters will vote for it. And I look back here, just as your presentation, not only did the operating budget numbers go down, but you look at the difference from 2023 for the warrant articles and how they passed. There is a general feeling and obvious of not spending money. So, I thank you for getting this for us. I could have come up with it, but I think this makes a lot more sense, and it, I was pleased that it didn't really hit any department too hard. So, that's my comments, and I think we should talk about it tonight because we're going to have to vote tomorrow night. Am I correct?
Yeah, this definitely needs to be decided on by tomorrow evening so that we can process and get ready for the Budget Committee. That's what goes to next. And the other thing that I will sit here and tell you, this takes out all the capital outlays. I'm sorry. It takes out, it removes all of the capital outlays. I feel, I'm feeling much better about being able to get the cameras taken care of, out of that reserve fund, and I think that we may be able to acquire the broom and the other public works garage equipment toward the end of the year due to some monies that we have because of staffing. I would also remind you, this number does not contemplate what's going to happen in two weeks with our good friends from School Care.
So, Jim, I have, I want to thank you. Jim, you did an excellent job with this. I have a question. One-time reduction in hydrant fees. Can you explain it for the general public?
Yep. So, I do think that we should go back in 2027 to that 326 number, I think it is. You know, the audit report painted the water fund in a good financial position. I think that they can take care of, or they can absorb that loss for a year. The other thing that I think we should talk about when we get to that point, we do have, if you recall, a few years back, there was a capital reserve fund established under a certain RSA for the Water Department. You, as the Board of Selectmen, do have the right under law for looking at your audit report and making a decision to transfer some of those reserve fund balances into a capital reserve fund if you so desired. That could potentially reduce warrant article asks for 2026 if we decided to go that route, but that's very premature conversation at this point.
All right. Evan.
So, was there any department that didn't take a cut?
Library did not get a hit.
Was there a recent, was there anything?
They operate under trustees, so I tend not to, I tend to be barricaded a little bit from that budget. I think everybody else got a hit. John?
Yeah. This last page we have summarizes everything unless you have a different idea. Because we have to make some decisions, I would think it makes sense if we start, like, with the executive budget. As we know, they're all broken out in our budget books, but this kind of summarizes everything Jim has just done. It might make sense to get down line by line and see if there's any other reductions, if you will, that we want to make. Does that make any sense? Does somebody have a better idea? I'm open. I know we just got some of this, but we need, I don't think we need to, at least my feeling is we've gone through this enough to know that we need to make a decision tonight if we can.
I think it makes sense to go down by department, and I just pulled mine apart. I can see executive, and then I can see what comes out.
Okay, well, that's the other way.
And then I can go to town manager, and I think that if there's anything in any of those lines that somebody has a hard time with, we could then talk about that particular line.
That's what I'm saying. As you know, we've spent plenty of time with this as well, but Jim just organized the reductions like we asked. So, I think that it would make sense, as Lynda just said too, if we put these side by side, if there is a question from somebody on, you know, let's look at executives, say clerical wages, Jim could answer the question.
Yeah, and I'll, let me also say, some of the rationale for some of this stuff was looking at the five-year averages. That's where those clerical wages came from. There's a couple of electricities in there. It wasn't just arbitrarily grabbed. It was the review of the history of the five-year averages. So, it wasn't just pick and choose. It was going down through the budget with the five-year averages and saying, I can make up a little here, there, everywhere.
That's what I'm saying. If we have a question about something within this, as Lynda pointed out, we could have the breakouts of the different line items for, say, executive department. So, does that make sense? Anybody have, you want to start that way, and if we run into problems, we can change it?
I'm okay.
Okay. All right, let's take the first. So, if there's no questions, I'm going to just drop to the next one. Okay? That was a cut of 3.24%. Town Manager, 1.34%. zoning board adjustment was a percentage cut of 15.81%. Planning Board was a reduction of 49.57%.
So, one of the big reductions there is, I missed it, you missed it. If you recall, a couple of years ago, there was funding in the budget to look at impact studies. It got put back in each year at the number of $7,500 because of the default budget. So, that project is, my understanding, was completed, and we can back that $7,500 out as a result. That's where that number came from.
Sorry, Jim. What, maybe I wasn't here. What are you talking about in impact studies?
So, there was asked a few years back by the planning board to look at impact fees, and that was a, I believe it was over a two-year process, $15,000, work with attorneys. Second year of that project, we landed the default budget, and as a result, it's rolled in to the budget each year.
Town Clerk, reduction of 1.62%. Finance Department.
Hold on. So, is that going to impact the voting machines?
Voting machines have been secured. They're already here. So, no, that was actually end of 2024 purchase with encumbered funds question.
So, it was the last year.
Okay. Finance Department, 2.17%. Assessing, 0.57%. Tax Collector, 0.48%. Miscellaneous expenses, a reduction of 55.56%. Okay. Planning Department, reduction of 12.65%. Brewster Building, reduction of 5.94%. Technology, reduction of 4.99%.
I have one question. In terms of computer maintenance, is that stuff that we do not have a contract for?
So, we, Sam, I can't recall. Is that line contract?
The computer maintenance is, like, our MuniSmart, a lot of the softwares that departments use. Our tax collector utility billing software also includes internet and phone. Our Avatar software, Block Five, GoToMeeting. There's a site, Industries, I think it's for the cemetery record management. There's also a Tri-Tech software system.
How much will be less left if we take out $10,000?
There was 259,677 in, at the town manager's level.
Okay. Right.
Hey, next is Police Department, 1.56%. Ambulance, 1.33%.
I have a question on professional development, $10,000. Did, will that, will we put some of that out in the warrant article?
Yeah, so we, when we develop the warrant article, there will be training for, again, probably two paramedics.
Okay. Thank you.
A Fire Department, 0.52%. Code Enforcement, 18.36%. Emergency Management, reduction of 8.71%. ESP, Public Safety Building, 1.65%. DPW Administration, Department of Public Works, reduction of 2.34%. Streets and Highways, reduction of 6.67%.
I guess that's the one that I think will be the most impact on the public because we've, two years, they've had significant cuts. I think we need to cut it, but I think that's one area that I think the public is going to see.
Yeah, I agree with you, Lynda. This, what I tried to do was find an in-between point in a lot of the maintenance supplies and whatnot from the default budget to the proposed budget, to find a happy medium so that there was, we could still continue to get, instead of buying, and I'm just using an example, you know, if this year we buy 25 culverts because of default and we have 75 in the budget, I budgeted to get us the 50. Just tried to find a happy medium there, and it's.
So, the drainage pipe that we bought at the end of last year, that was a recommendation from Lynda, do we, do we still have that drainage pipe which could supplement the $10,000 for this cut?
How much stock do we have for drainage pipe?
Okay, next is Streets and Highways, 6.67%. Garage, 7.12%. Buildings and Grounds, 6.92%. Solid Waste, reduction of 1.64%. Animal Control, 7.30%.
Let's go back to Buildings and Grounds. Town Docs.
Yes.
What's the, what's the $7,000 on that one? Town Docs, Buildings and Grounds, last line, 01431920721. Town docks, buildings and grounds, last line, 01431-920-721.
It's in the budget as dock maintenance.
Okay.
What's that, John?
Okay, next I have parks administration, 1.58%. Parks maintenance, 3.14%. Hockey rink, 36.43%.
Yeah, Jim, where is, what did you take that $40,000? It looks like a one lump sum.
It is. We're going to have to ask the director to create more revenue.
Okay.
Which seems like he's been doing pretty well so far.
But it's coming out of the general fund.
Correct, because that's the amount we pay over.
Just asking, Jim, it's coming out of the general.
Correct, so we're dropping from, in round numbers, we're dropping this from $110,000, which is the, what we program for ICE time. If you recall, I think it was last year, there was a motion to try to do that on the floor, down to about $60,000. You know, I think the director has done a good job at promoting the facility off-season, starting up a little bit earlier. I really hate to handcuff him here, but I think this is something that we're going to see the budget committee do if we don't.
Okay, next I have programs, 15.37%. Next I have town docks.
So let's, let's talk about the, let's talk about the programs. What kind of programs, part-time wages, are we talking about?
John, I honestly am not sure what those part-time wages are associated with programs. I looked at the five-year averages and use this as a number.
Okay.
Next we have town dock, 27.50. I assume that's a reduction in the dock workers, is it down there in the weekends?
Yeah, and this, this summer, this would bring us exactly in line with what was spent this past summer.
Okay. So we're not eliminating them with this reduction?
No, we're not eliminating them whatsoever.
Okay, good. American Legion, 40.84%. Then Libby Museum, 28.66%. Clark Complex, 1.64%.
So Jim, what will we be giving up for the American Legion for $6,000?
Again, that is based on what they've spent this year. I would also say, you know, let's get to the reality of it. If we get a budget passed, okay, good news. You know, as the year progresses, there's traditionally turnover, other things along those lines occur. And I do firmly believe in the fact of departments have a bottom-line budget, and they, as long as they're staying within their bottom line, they let me know when something's getting hairy. We can have conversations about line item transfers if needed. Obviously, we'd rather not do that. But at the end of the day, if it means making a department whole because something occurred and they need that additional funding, that's why humans are standing here to make those informed decisions.
Anybody have any comments?
Well, are we going to do the, talk about the hydrant fees? And then the contracted ambulance increase in the warrant article? I'll make a comment about the hydrant fees. That's a hard one for me to swallow, but I think where we are and that the water fund is, has a good unassigned fund balance, I can do it, but only for one year. That is what it costs the water fund to provide the town with a hydrant system. And I'm, I'm willing to do it. It took us a lot to get the right amount in the budget, so I'm a little concerned of taking this amount out, but I'm willing to do it to bring this budget down to where I think we can get it passed.
Linda, I would echo that, and I would also state that it's been, what, four years now since that number's been moved? I would suggest, if I remember correctly, that number was based on a 17.5%.
That's correct.
Of the operating budget. I would suggest that we probably reevaluate that program to see what the right number for hydrant fees is. Is it 17.5% on an annual basis? Does it stay at the 326? What do we do with it? And it needs to be revisited.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
Offhand, do we know what the unassigned fund balance is for the water fund?
I want to say it was 1.5.
Million? Can we verify that, Sam? When, between now and then?
And that was in our, you're saying that figure came out of our audit report? So if I go and pick up my audit report, I can go find that number. Thank you.
It's going to be in the audit someplace, right?
I'm just making sure, I can go look for it.
I just wanted to explain hydrant fees so that the public understands. They're charges placed on water customers or property owners to cover the cost of installing, maintaining, operating, flushing the hydrants, so that we have a hydrant system in the town to, for the fire department to use, like when Hunter's had the fire.
Correct, but it's taken, because we transfer the money over, it is on the tax rate, so everybody pays and not the water users.
Yep.
Any more discussion about any of these items, and what do you want to do?
The 292 number, Linda, you would ask the.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the 292.97 figure. You know, I don't like it, but I think it's the way to go.
So the other thing that I would say about that one, if you go to the 2024 funding chart, petition warrant article for $500,000 was put out for ambulance services. That passed by 58.31%. But that was part of the crux for me saying yes on going that direction is because it was done in the past, the voters said yes, and I think it's a very sellable article and amount, knowing that with everything, if it's falling in place, it's the last year of that contract.
Just so that I'm clear, we will, there's a prospective offer here to remove it from the general fund, put it out into a warrant. So if the warrant were to pass, would the voter pay the same amount of money that they would pay if it was in the general fund?
If it was in the general fund and it passed, yes.
Thank you.
So I had a conversation with the Meredith Fire Chief today, just about how their department operates and compared to our department. He enlightened me, and it is a apples-to-oranges comparison between how the two operate. One thing he did state to me is they do have a contract with Stewart's, wasn't exactly sure exactly how much it was. It has two ambulances staffed, but it's in a consortium of towns. And he said that they rely heavily on backup from Laconia and from New Hampton. And he said that there are times, he goes, and it can be where it could take 30 minutes for an ambulance to get to someone if the ambulance system is stressed. This is something our ambulance system will keep from happening in town. He also said that it's difficult because when ambulances are coming from all over, the community doesn't know who's going to serve them at any given time, and there's different faces, new faces, and all sorts of things happening. So I want to implore upon the citizens that we're making the right choice. A firebase ambulance system is going to work out financially in the end, after a couple years of receiving revenues, and it's going to keep your service as good or better going forward for the citizens of the town.
So I would just ask you, let me just clean up the numbers a little bit so that I can have a motion for you tomorrow, because there are a couple of calculation errors. They're in the hundreds of dollars, but I'd like to have it cleaned up for you.
But I think that you, and I think us would like to, have you moved forward with this? Am I correct?
Yeah.
In the numbers that we see here, even though we may not like them either, but we're going to have to go, go ahead with them, and, because we have to hand this over to the budget committee on Thursday, correct?
Correct. Well, we have to start preparing Thursday, handing it over. The other thing that I think this does is, you know, I can go through this really quickly tomorrow night, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more people watching tomorrow evening, select board meeting, so that we can get the message out.
But I guess, I guess I'd like to know whether the, the whole board is in favor of Jim moving forward with this, and we can talk about the numbers again tomorrow night at some point, our meeting, maybe in Jim's report to us. Does that make sense? Anybody have any objections to that?
I'm comfortable.
Do we move forward with this?
Well, I certainly wouldn't want Jim to stop. I just want to know, Jim, the, we're keying off number two on this piece of paper up above. That's where we're keying, 9.7 up on, on, is that where it is, Jim? Number two?
Yeah, that's correct. So number two lays out where the proposed budget was, or still sits right now, where the proposed default budget is.
Yes.
And the projected increase for 2026 with a default budget is $1.94 million.
And I completely agree, understand, support, raise my hand, whatever the right nomenclature is, that we're, we're in, we're in the ambulance business, and we shouldn't be giving it a haircut before we even start, that the voter is going to pay the same amount of money, whether it's in the operating budget, the general fund, or whether it's out there, assuming the warrant article passes. Okay? It's 272. And then the hydrant, you're saying that's a one-timer, and, and we could take it out of the unassigned fund balance, you think?
I think, I, what I think he was saying was that there's enough money in their unassigned fund balance to, to cover the expense that they lose. And then there was another thing you were talking about, was the capital reserve account that we created, and being able to, and that, you were going to talk to us later in the warrant article.
So I've got to sit down and look at the 2026 projections for the water fund, just to ensure that it can absorb that 175. But what I'm seeing, if it cannot absorb the 175 for some reason, we do have a fund balance that is healthy enough for it to be able to absorb a one-year loss.
Well, I, I do, that's why I brought it up, is I don't know what the mechanism is to get it out of there. If you're going to look at the bottom line of the water fund, which in the recent audit was a plus 758, which is good, your suggestion might be, we just, if we can do that again, we take it out of the 758? Assuming you had it.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it, I got it, okay. So you have a couple of levers to pull there on that side.
Okay.
Okay. And that's a one-timer?
It would absolutely, as far as I'm concerned, be a one-time issue.
At what point, or do you think there's a conversation to be had about the buying down of the tax rate?
We're working on finalizing the estimated revenue. Sam has been in regular contact with DRA, they're in their busy season, so it's a little more than challenging to get an answer from them, but we are working through the logistics of that right now. Or, let me rephrase that.
So that's TVD on that one, right? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
I'm, I'm comfortable.
Okay, everybody else comfortable moving forward? Thank you, Jim, that's a lot of work.
Okay, I'll have a quick presentation for you tomorrow evening. Thank you very much.
And do we have any revisits that we need to deal with?
We're done, yeah.
We just kind of.
Well, any others?
We revisited everything.
Yeah, we just took.
Any public comment at this point?
Now's your chance.
I want to thank every department head and every employee who worked with Jim on putting this together. It was very difficult, and I understand. It's difficult when anybody has to spend the same amount of money the next year when everything around you goes up, costs of fuel, gas, food, supplies, everything. So I commend all of you. You really stepped up.
Okay. Didn't know we were going to do that tonight. I didn't bring my stuff.
Okay, because that's when we, we had decided the last time to do it. We had talked at the last meeting that this was the night that after this, we were going to talk with Jim about his goals.
I haven't really looked at them, to be totally honest.
So we'll set another time?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, anybody got anything else? Have a motion to adjourn?
Senator.
Fellas a favor?
Hi.
Thank you.